Off we go.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Town of McCandless meeting for December 21st, 2020, our last meeting of the year. The invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by council members.
Thank you, Madam President. At this special time of year, and especially as we continue to face both pandemic and economic challenges, I wanted to use this time on behalf of council to offer everyone in our community best wishes for a safe and happy holiday season, to thank all of our frontline heroes, doctors, nurses, first responders, caregivers, retail workers, restaurant workers, bus drivers, and many, many others who work every day to make our lives better. To thank members of the military and our veterans for keeping us safe now and in the past. And finally, to share our hope that 2021 will bring the end of our current pandemic struggles and usher in a return to physical and economic health in McCandless, our state, our great nation, and throughout the world. We wish you a bright, healthy, happy, and healing new year for everyone. And now we'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I do think we have some announcements, but I think they're going to come out tonight on the liaison report. So I'm just going to let everyone do their own that are associated with their committees tonight. So now is the time for public comment. And if you haven't already, you can put your name and your address and your topic in the chat box. And RJ will give you a mic request. It can be on anything on tonight's meeting or anything at all. So it is open. And RJ, do you have anyone?
I do not. I don't think we actually have an audience right now.
We do, they're just-
I'm assuming none are coming in.
Well, they'll get us tomorrow. All right then. Hearing none, then let's go on to liaison reports. Activities Committee.
Thank you. The activities report is in your folder. We're still wrapping up our Making McCandless Merry and Bright project. And hopefully, hopefully, we should have a video out to you in the next day or two that we can load onto the town's website for people to enjoy the beautiful lights of our neighbors here in our town. And I thank everybody who participated in this project. We had a great response and looking forward to doing a lot more things, probably virtual for the next few months of the year. Thank you. If there's any questions, please let me know.
All right. EAC, under the EAC, we have two things that we're going to talk about today. Shelley?
Yes, thank you. Well, first of all, the minutes of the last meeting are in the council packet. And I am very pleased to, I think what we're looking for is a nod from council that pursue two new EAC projects. It's been a slow year, given the challenges we've been dealing with. But these are our two 2020 projects. And the first is, which I believe you all also have the project forms. But essentially, first is, I think that's well-stated exploration of solar energy projects. We have new committee members this year who have some great background and experience in these things. And the first is to explore if there are potential uses for solar energy in McCandless. It would give the EAC the authority to explore, discuss with, there's a variety of solar companies who will fund these kind of things, also looking for public, private partnership opportunities. And to analyze, assess, analyze, gather this information. And as I see it, it would be to bring back to council at a later date any recommendations for possibilities in the future. So I'm looking for kind of a heads up from council to approve this project, to continue it with the EAC.
I'm not sure if we have approved any projects since all the new members have been on. Maybe we have. I could be wrong on that. So we have not. Okay. All right. So let me just give you a little quickie about what this is about is we have these project forms. So if any of the committees want to do kind of something extra special that they think would require council to approve. Sometimes there's money associated with it. Sometimes there is not. These are not. But just to kind of, it's our way of making sure that the council kind of knows what the committees are doing and thinks that's the direction that council is interested in them going in. So it's not a formal vote. It's not a resolution. It's not an ordinance or it's not anything like that. It's a very informal, yeah, that sounds like a great idea. Or a nod, or yeah, just a yeah. So that's kind of, that's kind of what we're looking at. So they would kind of do the legwork and see what the options are out there, see what the funding is out there. And then they would bring that back because you all know we're looking at some improvements at town hall and see if indeed that would work with our plan and something we want to move forward on. There's no action that they take other than exactly what they put in this. And it is to explore this project. So it was very well written. I like the new form. Trish and Shelley collaborated on that. I like the new form. I think it's a little more comprehensive than the other one. So what do you all think? Get thumbs up for them to go over with this?
Can I ask a quick question?
Oh, you can sure ask a question. Yeah.
So when I was reading through things, Shelley, I was going to tell you Millville, they went, oh geez, like two to three years ago, they went almost completely like all solar with their town for their town hall. And if you reach out to Penn Future, they have a list of all the different townships that have gone green and solar. Like Tesla partnered with them a few years ago and they, I don't know, I just remember they had a bunch of information on that. So that might help kind of like guide you to all the different townships.
Thank you. I'll pass that on. Absolutely.
Mike, you have a question?
Shelley, three to five years ago, I did a project where a roof on the building needed to be replaced. If you did it with the solar package, there were tax credits and there were different amortization things you could do to lower taxes, not to where tax, not that that would do us, but I know contacts out there. If that's the way your committee goes.
That's great. I've also done solar projects. So maybe we could, you know, when this group comes up with some potential opportunities, I think that maybe it's a great idea for us to, you know, pool our knowledge and see what looks reasonable, obviously working with Bob as well.
Any other questions? Okay. If you can give me a thumbs up for who thinks this project should go forward. If not, thumbs down. Let's see. Shelley, okay, good. That's everybody. Terrific.
Well, harm in exploring.
Yeah.
Exploring, yes. So the second project is, as some of you know, some of you might not, being newer, is that last year we partnered with Pitt to do a capstone project. And I think you might all be aware that they did an energy audit of our town hall building. And through Angela, thank you Angela, because Angela was kind of the project manager, if you will, of that project, she connected EAC with Dr. Kersman at Pitt. Because he contacted her. I'm not sure which way it went, but they were interested or we were interested in seeing if they wanted to devote one of their student capstone projects to McCandless again this year, which is a great opportunity because I think the experience was really good and beneficial last year. And this is, you know, great talent, student talent at no cost to us to partner in these things. So what, and Angela and I kind of coordinated, collaborated on this. And what we suggested to Pitt was the idea of going in a little bit of a different direction. As you all know, the sustainability certification is a much broader definition of sustainability, well beyond, you know, kind of environmental and green. And given the circumstances we are living with, with the pandemic, the fact that this council has, and I've heard many, if not all of you at different junctures, speak about your concern related to small business, small business attracting them, keeping them, and obviously in a world of a pandemic, sustaining them. So we asked the, we asked the Pitt, Dr. Kersman, and by the way, Jonathan Bernstein, who is a member, a new member of the EAC, who was on council in Avalon, which has a nice kind of downtown small business district. We asked him if he'd be interested in the project manager of this project, and he said yes. So basically, at this point, I'm asking for, again, an approval from council to work with the Pitt students again. The way this would work is with a focus on small business this year. We have not completely identified all of the criteria. We've put some ideas in front of Pitt and Dr. Kersman got back to us this week. They have some interesting thoughts about how to approach this. Our, the requirement of EAC would be to fill out a form from Pitt that would kind of sell this project. They will go into 2021, offering up a variety of projects to these Pitt students to devote their time to. So there's not, I just want to make everyone aware that it's not, it's not a given that there will be an acceptance of this project because it's kind of left, as I understand it, up to the students. But I got from our recent conference call, I feel very optimistic that they would love to work with us again and give their students a real-life experience project, not just, you know, a kind of a hypothetical. So basically, what this project form would allow us to proceed with is working with Pitt to define a capstone project to sell to the students with the hope that the students would work on this project on our behalf in the spring.
Any questions for Shelley about this? They did a really great job last year. Very nice quality work. That report is actually on the SharePoint, I think, was. And again, any questions? Okay. Thumbs up for this to go forward? All right, good. All right, both are granted. I do want, Shelley mentioned the project manager, Jonathan Bernstein on, project manager is the right name, isn't it, Shelley, for that?
Yes.
Okay. And that Ishmael Quaqua is the project manager on the first one. So the EAC has some super great talented people on there that are really working hard and doing nice things. So I recognize them. I believe there was no meeting for the Heritage Center?
No meeting, but we did appoint Joseph Wall to the committee.
Right.
And his name may be familiar because I think it's actually his father's name on Wall Park. So he's been, his family has been involved in McCandless for quite a while. And he wanted to continue that tradition.
Very nice. No meaning of joint rec? Raj, did you want to add anything? We have your report. I mean, RJ, thanks.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yeah. I didn't know if you had anything to add. We-
Oh, no. I know. Everything on there is good. If anybody has any questions about it, just again, email me. But that's it.
Okay. If anyone has any good ideas to help Raj get started on the-
That'd be greatly appreciated. Yeah. If anybody has any great ideas, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
The McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority?
Thank you, Madam President. So while the minutes from the last board meeting on December 15th are not yet available, we did post in your council packet the November meeting minutes as well as all of the financial information from the ambulance authority through November 30th. A couple of items I just mentioned from December's board meeting is that on this, obviously, the authority relies heavily on subscriptions as part of their financial model. And while subscription, well, first of all, I guess I should say is that for your information is that they did redo their subscription program this year. And they did increase the prices for their subscriptions. So while the subscriptions in number are down, the dollars are actually up. So that's a pretty good thing. There was a recent meeting, the authority, that town manager Grim and the Marshall Township manager had. Bob, I don't know if you want to make any comments about that. We continue to work with them to try to help work through their financial issues.
Just very quickly, the purpose of the discussion that took place between Steve McKinnis, Bob Berkeley, Julie Bassin, Nini and I was to clarify a number of points or questions, answer questions that they had from the correspondence that the managers put together requesting information. So we just clarified a few points so that we could receive the information that we believe that we need to be able to make recommendations to our, all of our elected officials.
So that's all I have. Does anyone have any other questions or comments?
David?
Just a quick question. Looking through their financials, does this reflect the PPP loans at all? Or the, I guess, more pointedly, the forgiveness of the PPP loans? Do you know or no?
I don't remember. I did not look at them with that thought in mind. But as we know, I mean, I think it's fair to say that if it isn't reflected today, it should be reflected as of 2021.
Right.
After they got through this, you know, stub year, I think they're calling it. Because they previously had a fiscal year that ended, went from the summer to the summer. And now they have, they have voted, in fact, they just final approved having a calendar year financial situation so that it will be aligned with the municipalities they serve, which is a much, in my opinion, especially under the current circumstances, is a big improvement. Because, you know, we don't need to hear halfway through a year, their fiscal year, that they're in trouble. We needed to align the budget process. So.
David, to answer your question, the financials still show the PPP as a loan.
Okay.
So it's still listed as a liability right now.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob.
Sure.
Shelley, if anyone that who's going to be viewing this tomorrow is interested in a subscription, can they still contact the ambulance authority to give a subscription, to get some information on that?
Yeah, the good news there is, by the way, I honestly cannot tell you the exact rate, the subscriptions don't run contemporaneous with all of the municipalities they serve. But in terms of what they have just, and I meant to test this, and I have not done so yet, but what they have been working toward, what I understand is now in place that if you go on to their website, you can now, which you could not in the beginning when they first sent out the mail subscription requests. I understand that now you can actually go on to their website and you can electronically subscribe.
So if you didn't get your subscription paper, or you throw it away, or forgot about it, or want to go ahead and do it? It's not too late. Exactly. All right, great. Thank you. Anything else, Shelley?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. I think the MIDA did not meet. McCandless Sanitary Authority.
Info should be in your packets, but two quick notes. I can't remember if I already announced this or not, but there's no rate increase for next year. So people will probably, you know, not be upset to hear that one. And I think independently in our packets, we have the mutual aid agreement from the North Hills Council of Governments for just the ability to provide services. I can't remember if that is a separate item.
It is.
So we'll get to that later.
Okay. I don't think the North Hills Council of Governments met?
No meeting.
Okay. And the Public, Northland Public Library Authority?
Information's in your packets. And for anybody who didn't see it due to the ongoing COVID concerns and where the trends are heading, the library is going to be closing the building on December 26th. And I think in the past, they've basically done like a, you know, a two-week reevaluation when they've closed the building, if I remember right. So it'll be closed at least through the year, I'm sure. And then I think they'll, I think they have a meeting at the beginning of January, maybe the second week of January, which I'm sure that will be a subject of discussion.
All right. I think the North Pittsburgh Community Development Authority also had no meeting. The Personnel Board, and if I'm wrong on any of this, please stop me. The Personnel Board, I also believe, had no meeting. The Planning Commission did have a meeting and their minutes are in your folders. Does anyone have any questions about that? Some of those things will be coming forward. Okay, all right. Technology Committee?
The minutes from the most recent meeting are in your packets. If anyone has any questions, we have been trying to answer them.
If anyone doesn't have time to read all of the minutes, always read what technology is doing. They're always doing something completely cool. So if you can only read one, those are really good ones. I believe there was no meeting for the, oh, did anyone have any questions for Angela? I'm sorry. The, stay tuned. The channel is coming. We've been saying it for five years, but I think it's really going to be true. It's really going to be true. So.
Getting closer all the time.
Getting closer all the time. I believe there was no meeting for the Volunteer Firefighters Steering Committee. Zoning Hearing Board?
Zoning Hearing Board did meet last week, but the minutes have not been prepared yet. So the minutes in your packet are from the previous month's meeting. But we will be following up. But if you do have any questions, please let me know.
Okay. Not much in the way of reports or correspondence for me this, just one week since our last meeting. Town manager's report, did you have anything you want to elaborate on there, Bob?
No, you already mentioned about the, what do we call it, McTV or whatever we're going to call it. But I have nothing further to report other than what I already have in my managerial report. And I can take any questions that you have.
Any questions for Bob? All right. Town Attorney's Report?
Thank you, Madam President. Submitted my report in advance. It was in the shared drive. And don't have anything else necessarily to report in public session, but happy to answer any questions if it's feasible to answer in public. If not, I hope all y'all have a great holiday and wish y'all a Happy New Year.
Thanks, Dave.
Sure.
All right. Under Old Business, there's a motion to approve the checklist. Would someone like to make that motion?
I will. I move to approve checklisting number 11 dated November 1st through November 30th, 2020, totaling $740,268.14 submitted to each member of council and posted on the bulletin board and town website.
Okay, Carolyn. We took questions last week on this, but does anyone have any additional questions? Or comments? All right, hearing none. All those approving the checklist indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. unanimous. Motion carries. All right. 10B, reappraisal. Does someone like to make a motion?
Madam President, I'll move to adopt ordinance number 1507, an ordinance reapproaching certain amounts of money within the general fund 2020 budget.
Second.
Okay. We also reviewed this last week, but does anyone else have any additional questions or comments on this at all? Okay, all right. All those in favor of the reappraisal, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Who wants to read the good news about the real estate tax? Oh, Trish, she got it.
I move to adopt ordinance number 1508, an ordinance approving the Town of McCandless budget, setting the real estate tax rate and other revenue sources, and setting certain appropriations for the 2021 calendar year. Second.
Okay. Okay, so just in case no one's keeping up, that means that there is no change, which means that there's no tax increase. So that means our millage remains 1.236, which means 12 cents on every $100,000 for the cost of your real estate, second lowest millage in Allegheny County. And fun fact, the last time that taxes were raised in McCandless was, who knows? Anybody know? 2005. Just to kind of let you know, it's a nice fun fact. They said we would, that we'd raise taxes. Okay. All those in favor of maintaining our tax rate, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pause. Motion carries. Okay. How about ordinance 509? Is there a motion?
Move to adopt ordinance 1509, establishing a volunteer service credit program, authorizing local tax credits for resident volunteer members of volunteer fire companies who serve outside of McCandless, and establishing administrative procedures and appeals.
Second.
I think David may have edged you out just one little smidge, Trish, there. Are there any questions about this? We kind of talked about this. A lot of the surrounding municipalities give our residents the tax credit. So we're kind of reciprocating with our surrounding communities is really what we're doing. But if those volunteer firefighters would like to come and be firefighters and mechanics, we would love to have you to, just in case you change your mind. Any questions about this? All right. All right. Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are, I think we're ready for new business now. Is there a motion to establish our competitive bidding, 11A?
I have a question.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll direct this to Town Manager Grimm. So Bob, while I'm not challenging the charter provision or even the amount that you're authorized to approve without competitive bid, but I was curious, first of all, I mean, it's $41,045, so I was curious about two things. One is how do you determine if something is going to be above or below that unique number? And secondly, are there situations where despite, especially if you don't really know if it's going to be below or above, that you choose to competitively bid regardless?
We, even at the 41.5 figure, we will be getting at least three quotes from a, from vendors. So we're, we're looking at this, the, we just will not be formally bidding something unless the estimates come in either through an engineer or through conversations with, with vendors. If we expect anything to be close to that 41,000 number or above it, then we will formally bid it. Otherwise, we're, we're receiving three quotes, written quotes from vendors.
That's a very satisfactory answer.
I'm glad.
Things, things could have gotten bad. Yes, Mike.
Bob, what is the minimum someone could sole source a purchase?
For us, $2,500, well, under $2,500.
Okay.
You wanted to find, Mike, you wanted to find sole source?
Meaning no competitive bidding, that they could go straight to that vendor?
Right.
And say, I want this service or supply from you, so.
Yeah, the only time that, that, that may vary, Mike, is if there is something that's a unique product or sole source provider where we can't get it anywhere else, but then we confirm that that's the case, that we're not able to receive, to get it any other way.
These are all great questions. Anyone have any more questions about this?
And believe me, there's somebody across the table from me who is a stickler for getting that, those two or three prices, even for me.
That's why we put her there.
I told her years ago or 18 months ago that I would be her worst offender and I've proven myself right time and again.
Stay on him, Trish.
He hates it when I'm in his office when there's a purchase order that comes through.
All right, any other questions? Are we comfortable making a motion?
I'll move.
Okay.
I move to adopt Resolution 22 of the 2020 series, a resolution establishing the amount when competitive bidding shall not be required for contracts for labor, material, supplies, or services at up to $41,045 in accordance with Section 1303 of the Town Home Rule Charter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And that is one quarter of 1% of the total budget. That's how that number is calculated, if you remember that from last week when that was just for memory sake. Okay, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
And Kim, if I, if I can, I just want to make sure that it's on the record. This is actually $6,000 less than the 2020 number that we've been working with because of the reduction in the 2020 budget. That will be a little tighter with our overall purchasing.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, the, is there a motion for the police pension plan for 2021?
Move to adopt Resolution Number 23 of the 2020 series, a resolution establishing the rate of participant contributions of the town of McCandless Police Pension Plan at 5% for 2021.
Second.
Okay. Now let me, let me make sure that I have this right. And the way this works is Act 27, am I right, 27?
Act 600.
I wasn't even close. Okay, Act 600 says that sets this rate for the police pension plan at 5%. And the way I understand this, and tell me, Bob, is that as long as it stays at 5%, then that's what the act said. We can change it, but we still have to pass saying we're not changing it. We're just doing what the act says.
Yeah, yeah, the, the act says that it would be at 5% unless we ask or we set it lower. This is a housekeeping item that we just affirm the fact that we're keeping the contribution rate at 5%.
And we could only lower it, but not raise it if we wanted to, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay, all right. Any other questions about that? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. The next one is Resolution Number 24 for the volunteer fire companies.
I'll move.
Okay, Shelley?
Move to adopt Resolution Number 24 of 2020, approving the eligibility of certified members of the volunteer fire companies serving the town to receive an earned income tax credit not to exceed $500 for the 2021 tax year.
Second.
Okay, Trish? Are there any questions about this? You received a list of the firefighters who meet the criteria. This is the criteria sent to the chiefs. The chief makes, keep records of all the hours they put in, all the training that they do, everything that they do. And when they meet that criteria, then they send them to us and that's how this is set up and then we approve that list every year. So that's, that's what this is. Any comments or questions on this at all? Okay, all right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, Financial Auditor. Is there a nomination? Well, we're not going to be audited this year?
The staff's recommendation would be to continue with Mar Dusel. After a review of the audit or the proposals and references, we believe that they are in a position that they can provide us with a better ability to continue to improve upon the professionalism of our financial reporting efforts for the town.
Any questions for Bob about that? Okay, is there, would anyone like to make a motion or to nominate one of these three auditing firms, I guess they are, companies?
Madam President, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to, move to approve Mar Dusel to audit financial records for 2020, 2021, and 2022.
Second.
Okay, I think Shelley got that in a little bit quicker. Okay, this is, this is for a three-year contract, as Angela read. I'll give you another chance for any more comments, questions. Okay, hearing none. All those in favors, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, there are auditors again for the next three years.
Thank you all.
Is there a motion for Resolution Number 25?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 25 of 2020, approving an intergovernmental cooperation agreement among member municipalities of the North Hills Council of Governments to include certain specified municipal authorities for the purpose of providing mutual aid in police, fire, public works, and other municipal services as needed and extending across municipal boundaries.
Is there a second?
Second.
David? Okay. This is, as it says, an intergovernmental cooperation so that if something happened that we had a big disaster or heaven forbid that COVID knocked out a lot of our officers, that we could get some help from our friends and we could also help our friends if they needed it. So it's always nice to have a little backup, Bob.
And I, I just wanted to expand a little bit upon what you were saying, Kim. The, the conversation started several weeks ago with the idea of if public works departments went down due to COVID during a snow event, that it would be good to try to put something together that we would be able to help each other out. And as we were talking about it, we thought, well, we already have a mutual aid agreement in place. We, we should be fine. The more we looked into it, the more we realized that the mutual aid agreement was set up more for fire and for police purposes than for public works. So it was felt that that mutual aid agreement should be updated to include public works so that we, we cover ourselves in that regard. I think we had Steve take a look at it as well as Mark, Ryan, and Dan. So I think we're all, we're all comfortable. I shouldn't speak for you, Steve, sorry.
No, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay, okay, but we've all reviewed that, so we're.
Are there any, any questions about this at all?
Madam President?
Yes.
Have we, have we worked out the concerns? I guess this question's for Bob about our snow equipment fitting into streets that may be more narrow or we have, do we have plans to use the other municipalities' equipment in those instances?
I, I think that's, it will be limited because of the size of our trucks and other communities are facing the same thing. You know, we'll only be going into areas that we can comfortably go into. Obviously, some of the streets in Millvale or Etna would be much too tight for a 10-ton dump truck. And I wouldn't want to put our people in that kind of situation, but you know, say Ross, a lot of the community, or a lot of the areas in Ross would be fine for our trucks to go into or Franklin Park.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Is there any other new business that needs to be brought before council at this time?
Yeah.
Nope. Okay, before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I'd like to wish everyone a very safe and happy the rest of 2020 and look forward with hopeful anticipation to a renewing of all of us in the coming year. So please take care of yourselves and say safe. And I get the vaccine on Wednesday. I'll let you know how it goes. Right? Is there a motion? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
I don't think there are any questions. So all those in favor of adjourning our last meeting of the year for 2020, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Take care, everyone.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Steelers.